I saw the announcement from school, didn't register with me. It was the same person.
Oh. Okay, um, thanks for coming to another meeting followed by previous meetings, but I was, uh, I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with Karen. And it basically mainly pretend or pertain to Kevin as we bring him on board. And we both, I think Karen and I both feel that basically one of the things we're lacking in the council is that we're we're kind of lacking direction. And we're kind of lacking projects. I mean, we've got, there's no denial. We've got this big project going on down south end of town. But just to give an example, and that's why just kicking off, I invited Steve and Jeanette. One of the, one of the things that I would like to see done, and everybody's going to have a chance to put in what they'd like to see too, but one of the ones that I'd like to see, and that's why I started off with, is do we need a revisit to our zoning ordinances? And Steve's been working very diligently and doing a great job and, and Jeanette has lent her counsel to us as far as her opinions and one thing the other. And I think as far as say Jeanette and Steve, that our present zoning ordinance is kind of lack something, don't they?
Yeah, the, the, the present ordinance, I believe was drafted with good intent. But it was kind of done on a copy and paste basis and with a group of individuals that weren't legally minded to follow the statutes in place. And so we have things in the ordinance and directions in the ordinance that necessarily don't follow what the statute would want us to do. And that is leading to, I think, interesting areas of litigation that we're getting into and keep getting tripped up on because there's areas of ambiguity in the ordinance. When Steve first got the job, we sat down and talked and had a very nice discussion about, I thought he would find the job, I thought he'd do a fine job at the job, but I thought he might have some difficulties with the ordinance because of the way it's, it's written. And I think that probably the, the best approach to the ordinance is to not look at it from a consulting perspective. What consultants can we have come in and make our ordinance look pretty and then re-present it to us? But how can we look at it from a standpoint to make it legally compliant with statutes? And then legally compliant with case law. And so I'll let Steve chime in wherever he'd like.
And I'll just finish that sentence with understanding.
Yes. So you had a situation where people were arguing about the, if a four boat on the plan commission could go forward. And it's clear in statute that it can't, it has to be five, but we could have had that written into the ordinance to help guide people.
We can, and, and one example of many. I'm not going to get into detail, but all the green tabs, all things I have questions about. Based where it says the Culver Recorder's Office, just another multiple cases where that'll be on file at the Culver Recorder's Office. Yeah. I could go on. But there's a lot of things in here that are just not correctly worded or copied and pasted. And then again, that's pointing me in the right direction for some of our state statutes that I had an opportunity to go through and compare to what we have and could brush a few things up in here, say the least. So I've been spending time. When I get it, and that's why I'm marking this up, these are all things I have questions about. And I'd like to see, or even I can even take a shot at drafting something and have Jeanette review that. I'm okay however anybody wants to do it.
You can do that with all the other stuff you're doing, Steve. I mean, I, I'm sure you're, I'm comfortable, you're confident to do it. You know, but I also know that you've got a full plate of other things going on, you know, that you've been very busy with. You, your day-to-day operations. I mean, so like the question is, do you have the time to do this also?
I can make it work. Okay.
This is going to be months long.
It's not an overnight fix.
No.
It's almost like Steve and I need to sit down and go section by section and match it to the code and the case law. And chew on it one section at a time. And then we need to get the public involved too. With, once we go to adopt it with the public hearings and all that, but the we need to take a really close look at arguments that keep creeping up at the BZA for reasons why I get, why I can get this variance. Because you're not clear here or there, or your, your ordinance doesn't say this and that. We need a really strong historical look at loopholes that have happened at the BZA.
I had some recent training, which was very good. And one of the people there who gave a presentation said when she represents clients at local planning commission or BZA meetings, first thing she goes to, and she can trip up, she says just about everybody on is definitions. Another area in our book that's very weak is we don't define things. So it's subjective, ambiguous. So I've been also looking at words that I know, when I read here, if I don't see a definition for it and need one, I'm making notes of all that also. And then there's a list of definitions from the American Planning Association. Our book actually references definitions and associations. Book of definitions or two books, I think it's 491, 492. But I don't even have a copy of those. So if I had to reference that, I couldn't right now. So we have some work to do.
It's, and to be frankly, it's not going to be inexpensive, but if you save yourself one lawsuit, two lawsuits. What's the?
When you write these ordinance, when you redo it, would you maybe a silly question, but do it electronically? That way you can hyperlink definitions to questionable words and attach it to the ordinance, to the statutes and maybe precedents that help clarify where you have cases down below the ordinance to reference for clarity.
That would be a really neat thing to do. That's where I think maybe we would fix it, write it, set that up and then give it to consultants to say, elect, you know, consultants that deal with that sort of data hyperlinking. Because you don't want me and my assistant to spend time doing that. You want me looking at the statute, the case law and how it reads. Not making it look pretty.
Sorry, I mean, you guys literally.
Yeah, but no, I think that's like the finished product. Once we get done, I think that's a fabulous idea. So that you can, people could go, oh, yeah, well, remember there was a case about that that said you can't do that if they want to get into it.
And most of the people that call me are looking at the symbol. They're not looking at hard copies. They're going online and they're reading it and to have those links would be fantastic.
That's great.
I know when I try and read something in that, in the ordinance, zoning ordinance. Right now you start on page one and you have, if it's, if what you want is on page 155, you've got to scroll through 154 pages before you get to 155.
Just click a little button, it takes right there.
Yeah, I mean, it should be. And same is true of Plymouth ordinance because it's all done on the same.
Uh huh. And Marshall County instead of, they were all cut and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotten past the Marshall Counties.
Right.
Very obvious.
And, and some of them have more definition and detail and did a better job of getting rid of some of the Marshall County references. And then some of them didn't. And ours is one that's just replete with Marshall County references.
And you said this, you're doing this, it won't take a lot of time. I think it'll be worth it. And it's also going to involve planning commission quite a bit because there's some of these that they're going to need to reconsider in my opinion also.
And one of the things that's come up in some of our discussions with the Culver 2040, I know things like that involves the revising the zoning ordinances, but also about and then being too prescriptive is not the right definition, but at least having a broader sense of what, you know, what may be happening throughout the, the world or communities as opposed to just our, our little segment of, of the world here. Having some flexibility built into it for future type of development and growth that may not be on our, our radar screen today. So it's not an R1, it's not an R2, it's not a C1 or C2 or PUD. So, or farmland, I mean, it might be something else.
Well, I know that one thing has come up quite a bit, just from people that I've run into is, you know, small houses and right now what we allow, I wouldn't consider a small house.
You're talking like the tiny house movement.
Yeah, right. Tiny house movement. I mean, what we have right now wouldn't fit. When I bought the property down where I'm living, the lots were 150 foot long and 44 foot wide. You couldn't put anything on it.
25 foot stone back.
Yeah, 10 foot on either side. Well, that's, that's a 24 with the overhang. You'd end up with a 20 foot wide house, which is more the definition of a tiny house. So obviously when those lots were made, because that whole south end, the lots were that size.
Right. And we, we should consider exactly too, you know, what the residents of the town want. There, you know, a lot of us think that we're reaching people and are very transparent. But in reality, most people aren't paying attention to what happens till it happens to them, like the trail. And so maybe we need to start out with a survey over some of these questions on things and say, you know, we're looking at redoing the ordinance. Perhaps we'd talk about tiny houses, talk about solar, talk about several things and get a feeling from the public about do they not care about these things at all? Or are they really passionate? Or is there a strong stint one way or another? And let that kind of guide. You're talking from a legislative point now. And from Steve and I's point, I think we're just want to be more invested in the, the legality part of it. But it's a good question from a legislative point, how do you get people involved?
Yeah. And if you want, if you, if you're going to change the zoning ordinances, you want to start with what we've got and, and make it appropriate and legal. But then if there's things that the residents here want, that's still in the comp plan, still, you know, something that we would approve of, or the majority would approve of, then, you know, we need to look at that as well at the same time. So it can be incorporated into a zoning plan.
Sure. And I would say even with the comp plan is, as a, as big as we've tried to get that out there. A lot of people probably are still absolutely unaware that they input in the, and, and perhaps we want to just look at a simple direct mail survey to every property owner and say, we told you these things were coming up. You, we really are reaching out to you.
Yeah.
Think about what those questions would look like because we don't want them to look like when you get questions from your senator. How, how much do you like this? How much more do you like this? You know?
You want your taxes raised or lowered.
A lot or a little.
Yeah.
Karen.
So it seems like you should chop this down into topics where some, five subjects. And different people, citizens could go after the one that they are most interested in. Is that what you would do or?
Well, eventually, I think at first we have to get to almost like this structural point with the ordinance that says, this is what we have to have. And people, you might have all these ideas in the world, but no. The state statute says this is how you send a ordinance violation and you want to write in, we're going to do this and that. That's not negotiable. We're not talking about that.
Prioritize.
You're right.
You gotta be very clear upfront.
Am I going? We're collaborating about things, I think, once we have a then starting to get community input, input, once we have a structural framework.
Steve, do you have any examples that you want to? Got all sorts of green there.
How long do you have?
Development standards, mobile homes, just, just one example in here. Dwelling use mainly be made with manufactured homes type B. Can we tell them what type B is? Cause there's no definition. I've, I've got an opinion on it. I haven't found the official definition. County says type B is double wide. And that one example of many, and mobile home, the term mobile home is pre-7, 1976, they're manufactured homes. Oh. Regulations of the sighting, I'm sorry, regulation of the setting SES facilities. Just get to the last sentence. Developer has the duty of compliance with reasonable conditions laid down by the Marshall County Plan Commission. On several of those cases in here.
Have we gotten burned on that one yet?
Not yet.
Sitting out there.
Some of these are going to be up to us that are in here. Multiple typos in here. I got, I got notes around things. Let's just talk about building height, structure height. We have in most cases, it's 35 feet.
Yeah.
We'll say where we measure that 35 feet from.
And that's been an argument before.
Yeah, that's, they're allowed to make, they're allowed to make them secretly.
There are going to talk to several contractors who have several different ideas on how to measure that.
And some below and some say the grade.
So, yeah, so.
But it's not in the.
It's not in there.
Yeah.
So if I'm out in public reading this, get 35 feet from it. In here, I think there's some just clarification on the language. It needs to say Culver Building Commissioner because it references county building commissioner, it can reference Culver Building Commissioner. It just says building commissioner, who are we talking about?
Yeah.
So these are just some general quick things I'm just looking to. All applications shall be made on forms provided by the building commissioner, by development plans. I don't provide those forms. It's got multiple cases for that type of information in here. Again, I, I think I could go on. There's the Culver Recorder's Office. I can get into more detail, but the point is there's lots of things that have to be coined up in here. And then that's not even, that's just what stands out right now. That's not referencing back to state statutes where there's conflict between state statute and the Culver Zone ordinance. Which gets back to what Jeanette said is the framework. You have to have a foundation first based on the state statutes.
And that's as, kind of with the unsafe ordinance you all had in place before. I wouldn't even do anything with unsafe building till I, I made you repeal the ordinance and align it with the statute. Because I just didn't want to. Wayne, did you have your finger out?
Yeah, I can tell you from being on the planning commission, a lot of things over the years, I've been on there, I don't know, 15 years or something. It never fails, something comes up, some attorney comes in, finds something, they twist it all around because they want something passed or done their way. We go back to the ordinance, well, it all comes down to how you define that, whatever that issue is. I mean, it's happened several times, you know, over the years. And you find yourself trying to rewrite a new plan, you know, for that stuff. Just be nice to, it could be all completely, I mean, really does be completely gone through. And, you know, because there's stuff. They will find it.
We try. No, you're right. And you're, you're never going to write a perfect ordinance that long. I mean, you take the simple phrase in law school, they tell you, no, no vehicles in the park. Well, if the ambulance driver drives in, are you going to find him? No. So there's always some, some question in an ordinance, but man, we could make it a lot better.
Well, let's assume that that gap between ordinance and statute has created issues that are out there in the public right now in terms of building. What happens when we correct it and move forward and some neighbor says, well, I can't do it, but they did it, right? It's, is that, are we grandfathering things? How, how does that play out?
That's, that's already, that's covered.
Okay.
Since, I think grandfather is always the right.
Yeah.
But understanding what you mean by that.
Okay.
It is. We can't, if somebody has done something, I, I run this all the time. Around the lake, how come my neighbor's got a car garage detached accessory structure garage? It's two doors, it has an apartment up above and now I can't. Most recently, that's what our ordinances are at today. That was done probably before the ordinances were even written. And it's have to explain to people that that was done prior to this ordinance.
Right. You didn't choose to build it in 1932 is why.
Right. Yeah.
But there were, are some people down by the ramp, just stop the ramp that have guest houses and storage for their boats with your two-story. You probably know what I'm talking about. Are those legal? Cause they weren't built that much long ago. Three, four, or five years.
I thought you were talking about little cabins down, down there. So I'm not sure it's practice.
Oh, well, you got, as you go past the ramp going south, you get houses on the right that match houses on the left as far as color. And so you can tell, but that's their guest house slash storage for their boats. And I just wondered how long this.
I think those slip through as, you know, you can you can only have a, a house and then an accessory building on, or a garage. You can't have a garage on a, without a house. If those are two separate lots, then the house is upstairs and the garage is downstairs.
I got it.
And it might have something to do with how the road runs through there and separates the lot.
Right.
It's a tricky area.
It's a very short lot.
Some of the roads are to the center line and some of them lots aren't and, you know.
Some of it is already, they don't want to break their, tie their step for their.
And some of them combined over the years and some have not.
Okay, thank you.
So consul, we think this is something that we need to take a look at. I know we can't make decisions, but.
It's something we, I mean, my opinion is it's something we definitely need to do. I think we also need to put something in the budget for this. And so, I mean, it sounds like it'll be a significant amount in that's time and in Steve's time. And rather than mix it with other legal fees, we should identify those costs or at least try and project those costs and put it in a, you know, specifically in, in the, some budget category so that we can identify it and budget for it and find out, you know, what this costs us. I think there's no question it needs to be done in my mind.
It's a legal liability. And I know it, so we should do something.
You also not?
No, I, I mean, I, I've just got asked this morning to come, so I don't have any, I didn't sit down and think about how many hours it might.
No.
Yeah.
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 I mean, it's, it's not productive for all of us to go through all of these different points because the, I mean, at first we don't necessarily have the, the expertise to, to give informed opinions on it. But I think it's, it does, it definitely needs to be done. And I think it's who we're probably the right people to do that.
Steve, anything else? Thank you both very much for taking time out of your day.
I'll work on it and then if it all part, this, and that's, that's obvious. How many meetings we have to attend and how long they go, you know? Yeah, but I can, yeah.
Yeah, but getting at ballpark and it takes a lot longer than what you think originally that it would take.
And maybe.
It's not a one-year deal either. This is going to be ongoing.
I was gonna say maybe break it into phases. So the, the document review and revision and things like that is one complete portion of what I would suggest. And the public experience and input, you know, would be a second component of that. And at least the document review, if you can project, you know, some numbers or, you know, reasonable project stuff for us. Not to exceed number or something.
Sure. Sure. I would say the hardest part will be the public portions, because you know, sometimes we have 20-minute meetings and three-hour meetings.
Yeah.
Really?
You get that.
Some people have questions and others will have questions, but ones won't, won't be clear on what it is that. Ones won't, won't be clear on what it is that. They really wanna see or. I mean, trying to read the entire zoning ordinance, if you just sit down and read it. Um, for the. Layman's, it is kind of. Mind boggling.
But we're, we're gonna do it and make it match, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Let's keep going. The idea that you raised, Kevin, about having this sort of a. In a live document that is interactive with other sources, I wonder if this might be a project. For all the high school seniors, either at the academy or at the, um, at the school that's in an IT program. Be interested in doing something. It'd be interesting, they didn't show the chipboard or learning about local government and things like that.
They don't teach civics anymore.
They really don't, but yeah, yeah, it would be.
But it's along those lines.
Also heard. A need, and correct me if I'm wrong, that moving forward, create a review process for them, so they don't become antiquated. And keep the line. Some type of formal review every. Few years or whatever. But yeah.
Yeah, because right now reviews only come up when there's a question.
Or we have a problem.
Or a problem, question or problem.
Was out of the barn, yeah.
And I guess part of my question is. What do we need to change right now? So that we don't. You know, like solar is one.
Like, where do you start?
Pre-actual documents where you're bleeding, where you're most likely bleeding out.
Yeah, right. And get that one. And maybe two or three others that are in the same boat. Get them. To where they read properly.
Almost like a medic in combat.
Pass. Pass those and then. Some of that, I don't think we can wait. Two years to make change.
To the liability.
Because of the lot, current liability.
And I think we, we talked about. Potentially appointing a. Miniature group to look at the, the solar issue, particularly as it came up and we put the moratorium up. On that, and not wait to two years, but, but to get a. Group of people with different expertise and. And. Maybe let them get started on that sooner rather than later.
And, you know, whatever we would, they would come up with as. Proposed plan. Or proposed ordinance. Then we could have. The building, our building commissioner and our.
Well, I, I mean, I would. I mean, I would suggest on that committee would be Ty. Um, and, um, Steve would be on that committee from the, from the get-go. And then. Um, some legal representation and some people who know about solar energy and some farmers from the area. Um, that they have some interest in this. And, you know, and Jim Clevenger has said that, you know, Marshall County went through this and I. You know, it's not appropriate for us to, to sort of change the wording on it from. Marshall County to Culver, because that's what got us into this trouble. But at least there's, there's some people with some experience who worked on that committee. In fact, I think Ty had an interview with Jamie in the paper last week. Um, about the Marshall County experience on it, so.
How long have they had? How long have they been doing this or?
The, according to Jim, the. Was about four years ago.
Four years ago was when they wrote the original ordinance.
And then what they do since then?
Nothing.
Yeah, their Plymouth hasn't been, or Marshall County's hasn't been updated either.
Right, okay, great. So that part they aren't doing correctly.
Well, they haven't followed through on it, no, but they went through the initial study and there were some people who were involved in that. I mean, is it? Urban Bremen who has a, has a solar. And Silla has the solar farm and that's at least. I would say at least five years old. And I know that there was a gentleman there who was sort of the project leader on that. But I think there was a number of people around with some experience on it. That he could ask for participating, or at least to cap their expertise and knowledge.
Uh, I think the same with the citizens as well. About this, I mean, you gotta, you gotta hear from them. These guys voted on it and. Moved it forward, so. There's not as independently thinking as the citizens. Because of the vested interest.
Well, without. Without ranking anything at this time, but. I mean, I think this is a. My opinion, a realistic goal to. Look forward to. I think. The public perception would be. Well received that we're. You know, moving forward on this and.
I, I don't disagree, Bill, but there. If we have a town that's already done this. Are there angry citizens or are they all happy or?
I mean, Bill, are you talking about solar? Are you talking about the whole ordinance?
No, I'm not talking about solar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about.
Making that a project, got it, with a high priority on.
Yeah, I'm talking about coffee shop talk, I mean. This be something that, you know, would. Speak people's interest and. So forth, so. But I, I wanted to start out with that and then. You know, everybody else has a shot at what they wanna. I think, um, but. Because Steve leaves at four and Jeanette was able to come, I wanted to put that first, but. Rich, you got anything that's on your hot button?
I think. For consistency's sake. I would suggest that what should be our. You know, our priority list or our project list, or however you want to term it, is what we're working on with the comprehensive plan. I mean, we've had, you know, we've been working on that for. Probably at least six months and it's had a, a multidisciplinary group, some members from here, there's been a fair amount of community put on it. But I mean, I think that that shouldn't, you know, if, if we're looking for a guidebook on, on our priorities and what are things that are important to us. And projects, I would suggest that that's, you know, that's our outline that we should be working off of. Um, and there were, I mean, as you know, you said on, on the steering committee. Um, and I think, I don't know how many people participated in the public hearings on it. It's, you know, there were. There were six or seven sort of topics, there's quality of life, quality of place. The, uh, um, there's arts component, there's a, I think a. Housing comes under some development issues there, um, there's land use. So, I mean, it's, I think it's a pretty broad and comprehensive plan, but again, I think it's, that should be what's. That should identify our priorities and that's the list that we should be working off of, is my suggestion. And it's not a finished product yet, but I.
Yeah.
Um, it's well on a toy, I think.
One of the things that struck me while I was reading through it is that seventeen corridor and the economic development that was part of the. Just thought, I'm just saying that struck me. I thought I'm gonna stop there.
Heavily involved in that and that. You know, the expansion of our two-mile limit, which relates to zoning.
And, and a lot of that, we're not looking at being able to fill all that in. We want to have some available areas. That could be opened up for that. Because, you know, the person, they may want, we may find out that none of those people wanna sell, or maybe only one of them does, so you have to. Show a broader area that could be picked up as planning. And that kind of works for you guys and for Bob and utilities that. You know, here's the long-range vision and we're talking fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years, you know, we're looking out. Make sure that when we run the water sewer line out that direction, we bump it up a little bit, because we'd kind of like to see this happen in that area. But it's not like, none of this is like bringing about market tomorrow to have all that fill in.
Right. But it's also, it's also. See what surrounds us and not just have something pop up, um, but to have some control, um, in some direction. On the areas that are directly contiguous to, to Culver.
I have a real concern with our two-mile boundary. Because whenever we have tried to annex anything. One of the big carrots that the community has, and any community has, is sewer. And if the county goes through with the sewer districts and takes that off the table. If we do wanna expand or control what's happening around us, all we're just having that control anymore. And we are way smaller than our two-mile boundary. Everybody calls it the two-mile boundary, but our, it's technically the extraterritorial boundary. And we do not have anywhere near two miles. So do we want that control as a community before the county gives away our biggest carrot?
Yes.
I'll say the obvious.
Right, yeah.
But in, in thinking about sewer and thinking about development. Just in terms of feasibility. Tapping into what is proposed for the dunes and, and that expansion to the west, can we? Tap into that to keep that expansion developing out there. Kind of develop the synergy with that, if we're gonna put infrastructure out there. Okay, but that's more of a, you know, we've got, we've got different zones going on that land map. So that's a residential type of development. We want to encourage that, we go that way. But do we wanna have any industrial development, you know, like developments? We have more than one egg in our basket, you know, but we want a little bit more commercial. So that's where we were trying to, with that land map, show some different areas that we can kind of have a vision of. We're not gonna force it, but. This is what we're thinking. And when we do our planning, then we can kind of plan towards that.
So Rich, you've got the comprehensive plan in mind. How close are we to wrapping that up?
Closeer than we were six months ago.
Yeah.
I think, um, I think what is going on, we have a meeting next. Next Thursday, within Thursday, I think. And my, what I expected that meeting is that they're going to come back with. Um, sort of some documentation on the feedback that. That they gathered from the six or eight public meetings that occurred. Um, and then, um, I think we have, the council has, has contracted with Jenny to write the final document or report. So, um, I, I think this will probably be our last. Steering Committee Crossroads Meeting, and is what I've been led to believe, so I suspect. Hopefully in September, we'll have some document.
So your final meeting is basically a wrap-up of where all the dots went on the chart.
That's, that's my understanding of it.
That's, that's what I gather it might be.
Yeah, I think there might be a few more discussions. On the land use, I think some questions came up that resulted from some of the public input. Um, and maybe some suggestions on change definitions, you know.
Sure.
Definitions are important.
Oh, they are, yeah.
Yeah, that sort of thing. So it might be just a little bit longer than we anticipated based on a conversation with Donnie, but. Definitely closer than we were six months ago.
But people got to go place their dots where they thought was, and that's. A big part of it, because some of the stuff's gonna drop off.
Yes.
And some of the stuff's gonna be one, two, three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just looking at those, those boards. Obvious that, you know, there are things that jumped out and there are other things that. People weren't paying attention to, which.
But that, and that gets to maybe too much Jeanette was saying, you know, what people weren't paying attention to, that's just, it's not on their radar to even think about it. And the, the cluster of dots was, was pretty obvious, I think in terms of the starting points. You know, that's an easy one. Okay, the public has told us this, it was on, you know, all the brainstormers that we did. So, you know, let's start here, but then let's not lose sight of these other things.
Sure.
I have a question on the, on the county sewer. Project that's going on. And you might know more than. That sewer just gotta go somewhere. I'm assuming that. You know, any small development or. That's near. A sewer. Plant or a sewer district. Is gonna, like, the ones that are surrounding Culver are probably gonna end up at Culver's plant.
Well, the regional sewer.
Yes, most of. Yes, most of Union Township would come to Culver.
Yeah.
You know, and you, you will have a negotiation, just like you did with the other sewer districts on, on accepting that, but. You're gonna get put by the state.
Right.
You can't just say a platino, you're going to have to work with.
And the regional sewer district right now is taking into account the four lakes.
And what, you know, what I'm looking at is that, you know, we need to make sure our, our plant.
Oh, we have the capacity.
Has the capacity and, you know.
Kevin, what is, and maybe Bill knows too, I mean, what is, what is the direction the county is taking on this?
They have put some money into the organization of it at this point, so they are looking into, they, they've already set up a. I don't know what they're calling. Board to do that, um, there is no tax dollars going to it or any other money going to it at this point. So the county council and the commissioners have gotten together and some of the ARPA money, I think seventy-five thousand dollars. Got allocated towards it plus another.
Five hundred thousand got allocated yesterday. Recommended yesterday, five hundred thousand. To take in. The sewer district, those four lakes, but that five hundred thousand is to assist in those families. Can't afford to hook up.
And, and I'm. Plymouth, I'm on the Plymouth com plan right now too, and they're looking at the same things. You know, what, how do they define their boundaries and how this is gonna affect them? With the extraterritorial boundary, so, but there's, the county is not, well, I can't say never, but I don't see the county. Looking at setting up sewer plants. They are fighting one, taking advantage of the existing ones and part of it would be if he to. Over Plymouth, whoever, to upraise their plans to hammer that.
Well, right now, the regional sewer on the four lakes. The plan is to go to Plymouth.
Four lakes you're talking about?
Lawrence, Myers, and whatever the other two are. No, 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 it's the four lakes together. You know the names probably better than I. Twin Lakes, okay, yeah.
As far as the ones that are south, I mean, like Hawk, Little Law, Little Max, whatever you call that.
That's down the road.
Well, but I mean, those. I know, but I.
I think they're, they're concerned about the lakes, and then the second thing is the, you know, the rural communities like Barrow, where those lots are on top of each other. You know, the septic wells.
Aren't gonna get, uh. Re, 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 uh. Certified or, you're gonna have to get rid of it, you're not gonna get a new permit. Re-permit it, that's what I wanna say.
And that's the situation with.
No, that is.
And Little Max or whatever.
Yeah.
And I mean, they, for the property owners there, I mean, that's. Had a number of discussions about this, how we're going on it, but, um, you know, as far as the connection piece of it. If there's funding available. Does the county think that there's funding? I mean, federal dollars available to. For state dollars.
There's breakdown, apparently in the, in the last program, there was a lot of infrastructure dollars. Just to go to infrastructure, that's what has us looking at, putting in a water system, you know, there's. This is the timing, you know, get an infrastructure project, it's the time to get dollars from the beds.
Yeah, there were your, and, and infrastructure is one of the categories on, on this strategic plan. I don't know.
Where the land use plan comes, we have to, we have to have that overall plan to know where we're investing those dollars, where we want to have. So we know where to target, but, right, put that infrastructure.
Right.
Like, right now, I would assume that. You know. Part of. Lost Lake, Hawk Lake, whatever. Would go. Toward the. Southwest Conservancy District's line. And the rest would end up coming into the sewer plant. Down Tamarack.
Either way, it's gonna have to be pumped.
Yeah, right, and then they're all, you know. It's all pumping.
Bill, what's on your agenda? Well, the com plan is obviously the most important. In addition to what Rich said, I mean. We just finished a com plan. And I think part of what my concern was is how much of the new com plan. Ties into the, what was unfinished in the old one. And. Do, do we pick things up or if things greatly changed, i.e. like the Jefferson Corridor. And the Jefferson Corridor was in the first com plan. And, you know. This time around, you know, it's in there, but, you know. Yeah, the streets have been done and. Yeah, the streets have been done and stuff like that, and some of the properties getting cleaned up, but, you know, you know, where are we? Five or 10 years now from finishing that. Road, finishing Jefferson and making a, you know, the second pathway into the town. I mean, affordable housing, all that has been in there every year, but, but every year goes by and we know that. Affordable housing, that definition is going away.
Yeah.
And there's no such thing right now as affordable housing. Uh, except what Kevin's got, but, you know. And I'm not picking on Kevin, but I mean.
It's affordable.
No, no, no.
The question has always been affordable to who?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Then, and yeah, and I'm, I'm not picking on Kevin. I'm just saying, you know. Maple Ridge was supposed to be affordable housing at one seventy-five to two and a quarter. And that was less than eight years ago. Look what, look where houses are selling for now there.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you know.
You can't stop it either because it's, it's being governed by the.
I mean, it's a moving target. I mean, that's why I'm saying affordable is not, and we know we don't want, you know. Mobile homes per se on wheels and all that, but there are modular homes like the one that's across from the, uh, there's two of them, the one that's across from your building, Bill.
Yeah.
On, coming down Plymouth Street to me, and there's one right across from, uh, the liquor store, which is a modular home. I mean, they, they formed the, uh, basement and they brought the homes in on trucks and they. They held them together in my opinion, but I mean.
They're prefab.
They're prefab, but it's not what we would call a prefab house.
Yeah. Didn't one go up on West Jefferson, like in the four or five hundred block?
Well, there may be another one that does. Those are the two that I know.
On the, on the south, north side of the street.
The modular are still, they're built basically. They're just built in a factory and then.
Yeah, but I mean, they had that.
In modules.
Right. Yeah, I mean, they're up overnight.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm, comp plan is, you know, number one and just carrying forth with, you know, moving it forward. Because we, before we had the last comp plan, all we had was the charrette. And, you know, it wasn't adhered to too much. So. The charrette was, is still out there, but. So that's where I'm at.
What should be loo- looking at, Bill, do you think on the Jefferson corridor?
Well. Two point eight eight acres is one of them. And, uh, I mean, I. Currently in discussions. On that one.
Okay. Deal for under two hundred thousand dollars.
That's right. There would be probably a. Commercial building going in there. I say commercial, I'll just say it'll be a church.
Well, I know, I know another thing too, that, um, I learned up at the county on the unsafe building is that we talked about Bozmas. And, and she's a motivated seller now.
She is.
Yeah.
In there, yeah.
Yeah.
Finally, you know, sorry.
Yeah. And particularly since the, particularly since the east side of it's been torn down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, other than, you know, comp plan needs to be accomplished. I do think that we need to relight, rewrite solar before. The ordinance on the solar. Long before the rest.
More currently.
Yeah, well, and before the zoning ordinances gets finished.
That, oh, definitely.
I can't see waiting on that. That's something that needs to be done. It's not fair to the farmers that might want to sell to have it. Or other large landowners to have it to where they don't know. What the rules are going to be. And quite frankly, we don't know what the rules should be.
That's right.
Because we want to protect both the people that live in the area. The people that want to lease their property out and. And the people that live in the total area.
And the safety of the environment.
Yeah, and environmental safety, all the above. So I think that's, you know, very important and I think, you know, it should be done sooner rather than later. And I know that, um, like, I ran into. Jeanette. At the park one day and she had suggested mailing the survey, so maybe we need to. Figure out what it would cost to mail a survey to all the houses in the area.
I think we also have, and we certainly with Jim or Jeanette, be careful about that because. Um, some of this is dictated by state statute and, um, I don't think you want to ask people. To, I think you want to phrase, we want to ask them and if it is.
Right.
Or is compliant with state statute, you just can't, you know, the, the state has pretty strongly supported. Solar and said, you know, with the exception of, of safety issues. Um, they encourage communities to, you know, to pursue that. So I just, I, I don't disagree with getting public input on it. I just think we need to be careful about, you know, what we ask or tell people.
That's the parameter.
Yeah.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Do you want solar energy in?
I'm not saying we should send out a, a mail or tomorrow saying, do you like solar or do you hate solar?
I've been.
You know, because, you know, you could get the people that don't like it and the people that do like it, they vote yes or no.
Yeah, and I've been working on a list of potential, um, people for that committee, um, the whole sides of the issue. And, um, I would be happy to share that with the, with the council. I haven't talked to all of the people on it, so I, I just want to propose it without. I don't know if somebody's interested in doing it, but, um.
Bill?
I'm. Still thinking about budgets.
Okay.
And I, 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 it's just, it's, I don't know how we're going to solve it. And so I'm a little apprehensive. You guys, they have more experience doing that. But, um. I'm just, uh. Concerned about retention.
Yeah.
Because I think the salaries are going to take a hit. But.
Well, you gotta find a happy medium between retention, increasing salaries and. Remaining solvent.
Right, Solomon like wisdom.
Yeah, and, you know. Somebody will probably get tarred and feathered one way or the other.
I can guarantee you somebody would be upset.
Yeah.
When, when you and Rich went around and did what you. Did and talking to department heads and one thing, the other.
Yeah.
And obviously salary would be the number one issue, but what, what were some of the other things that you came up with?
Well, we had, uh, I mean, they, they're little things, but they add up. Give them a budget for having a pizza party, um, um, once a month or paint gun. Or sir, whatever is appropriate. Because Amber took her crew out for a paint, a paintball. Uh, day and, uh, they really had a lot of fun, but they're younger people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Bob is, that, um, you know, food is always a, a big driving force. Yeah. I mean, they did lunch every Friday and if, you know, if there's some.
Yeah.
Some thing that may, you know, he may feel is important to recognize him for, um, you know, that's, that he have. You know, and it's not, it's not a huge budget, but it's, it was a couple thousand dollars. Every department director's budget for the years for, for that type of thing. Um, you know, it would. You know, it's not, it's a little bit more than competent technology knowledge for what you're doing.
I mean, we as a council also do look a little bit more into recognition.
Yes.
Recognition can never be overdone.
Right.
In my opinion.
Yeah. I mean, you know, just. Not for telling somebody that.
Sneeze.
You know, telling somebody that they did a great job goes a long way.
Does.
Other than walking past them and not saying anything to them.
Yeah.
But maybe a little more formal recognitions or some special things.
Right.
Formal recognition is important, but recognition just to recognize something, you know, you can't eat recognition.
No.
You know, it's, it's.
But it's, it's not, it's not expensive to give them.
No, it's not. No, no. It was just like saying to the police, thank you for your service, like saying to a veteran, you. Veteran you see on the sidewalk, thank you for your service. You know, you get down to the VFW and eat and somebody walks in after having a ceremony, you get up and you salute them or, you know. Tell them thank for their service. I mean, that goes an awful long way.
Adding another PTO day.
Yeah, personal time off, it'd be a third.
Changing the vacation time, um, right now, it's, um, you get two weeks. Um, from one year to nine years and then ten years, you get. The third week.
Years to get three.
Yeah, um, and they felt that that was a pretty long stretch of time. And so I think we talked about. Something in the medium, you know, maybe five to seven years, you get a third week and then at, at 10. You get fourth and you get capped out at, was it 15 years or something?
I think it should be seventeen. We talked about, yeah, seventeen, you go to.
To somewhere other.
Five weeks.
Adding some time in there. And if we get the department staffed. Um, you know, adequately, the, the cost for that. Won't be as impactful as it is today. I mean, one of the problems today, I mean, Wayne's Department is a classic example. I mean, he's got, you know, just four people and a couple, very little part-time. And so they don't have time to take their, their, their PTO time or the vacation time. And so at the end of the year, besides what we've paid them for salary and the overtime, that we paid them out. Um, for their accrued vacation time and accrued holiday time. Um, and it's not their fault. I mean, they've earned it. But if we get adequate staffing, the cost to do that vacation time is not as impactful, right?
And I'm not advocating one way or the other, but if you remember, like in some of the departments where you have twenty-four hour, seven day week, twenty-four hour staffing. When, when that vacation is taken, you're paying the person that's taking the vacation, plus you're paying the person that's working, that's covering the shift. So you got, you just.
I, I don't.
Speaking of.
Department, just in addition to like Spencer or others.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
The others just. They don't do a big project the week you're gone. You know.
You're doing the cause and effect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing out because.
Yes.
Yeah.
There've been several times where it's been, well. Something and it's not a bunch of extra money, but you're still paying for it.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, I've got another one, which is the elephant in the room, what we heard yesterday. I think we've got to have to take a good, long, hard look at EMS. Not two years from now, I think. Uh, if anything, Joyce. In my opinion, to me personally, drove the, the point home. But. Two thousand twenty-five, we've got a real.
And on a road there, it's very expensive. So time of, of the essence.
Well.
But we, Bill, we can't make any decisions, but it sure wouldn't hurt for two of us, you know. To sit down and analyze it with, I don't know who, I don't have an idea as to how many people you want, but. You know, no more than four or five, and I don't know where you get them.
Well, and I think Karen pointed out that is it Argus with their fire territories?
You had to make sure.
Argus moved to a territory last year.
Well, that's one of the things.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean. And I, people like that wouldn't necessarily serve on, on our commissioner review, but would certainly be a source of information.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, the, the, this committee needs is going to every possible alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I join you in that.
And I think.
Okay, I'll, I'll help you with it.
And I think Bobby yesterday seemed to have some base knowledge on it.
Is that fine?
I mean, um. Karen doesn't have anything else to do. Yeah, but I'm.
Some of that.
Well, I think that there were, there were three things, the fire territory. Wallet and what was the third? He mentioned.
Third option was different.
We're going combining fire and EMS.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then EMS territory, right?
Yeah.
I don't think you can have, it's a, it's a fire territory. There's not an EMS.
Okay. If I understood it correctly, with fire territory, it's taking the township out because you form an independent board and a person.
It kind of takes a town and township.
So it's out of your.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we, we could appoint, I think, we would appoint someone to the board.
I think.
I think the township will get someone to the board and then the fire and EMS with them.
What you want to do probably is go to those fire territories that have been established over five or 10 years. You don't want just a newbie.
Right.
Yeah, because they're still, they're still, they're still feeling their way.
Yeah.
You want to go to the established ones and learn all the pitfalls or, you know, what worked. What the road block, road block were setting that up? And did you get that correctly and how's it working now? I mean.
I wonder just if they, even with the new ones like Argus, if they. Would it be to consult, there's some, someone who would help in their development if they could recommend us besides their own.
Oh, it's probably Baker Tully probably running them, I'm thinking it's on the first for them.
Well, the, the thing is, is when you. I've heard that when you set it up, you have to make sure that you've got sufficient money for expansion. For the next five years, you're better. Otherwise.
I have no idea.
Otherwise, you'll.
Off white on your face?
Yeah, because you won't have sufficient money to staff it or to build a new building or to. You know, combine the two.
The other thing is, uh, it, 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 time scale, right? How long is it going to get to get running because you just heard we're on the clock.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, you're right. You can't do that overnight.
It's a, it's about a two-year process minimally.
So you got to start now to have it in place, hopefully by twenty-five and you're already behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
Would it make any sense to have, uh. Baker Tully look at EMS?
At what cost? Let's see, there's, there's the cost again.
What, what are they looking at? Are they looking at a fire territory or a fire territory or?
Well, which way to go or?
Yeah.
I don't think that that's necessarily there.
They can work up the figures on what the costs might be after you figure out what it is you want, but they can't design it for you. I think I got that right.
I think there's a cheaper way to go than Baker Tully and I.
Yeah.
Search other companies that do somewhat the same thing. Yeah, and I'm going to bring it up, just like what the county has done, they're going to sender Dalton, county council and using sender Dalton. Uh. To counteract, we say, Baker Tully and two firms that do the same thing. But on a much cheaper budget.
Well, I don't, I'm not saying it has to be Baker Tully. I mean, the other firm, you know.
And there are others out there on that?
Yeah, there's other.
There's others out there.
But, but I guess my, the question that comes back to my mind is. Is as far as our EMS is concerned, is just how efficient is it?
Well, you know, you're required by law to have an EMS.
Right.
To provide EMS service, uh, whether it's provided as a, as a city. Or whether it's provided and owned by the township matters.
Right.
One way or the other. But. Cost wise, you know. Years back, there was discussions about going countywide when, uh, when, uh. Jeff first started, he was talking, you know, about talking with the other surf departments in the county. About countywide service.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because there you're combining your, your monies and your manpower. But. It's like fire and EMS, if it's a paid fire or a volunteer fire. Or a paid EMS or volunteer EMS, volunteer obviously is cheaper, but it's not, its longevity is, you know, depends on who's available.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the benefit you have with fire is the. You, if you have a large number, you can, you know, your chances of getting a group. In large enough to fight a fire is better than if you, you know, have two people scheduled. And committed to that particular day. I mean, there's a little bit of difference there. But, uh, neither one of them is cheap.
Well, and they brought up the point, uh, I don't know why you still go by Bobby. Does he go by Bobby or Bob?
Well, when I call him Bobby, he answers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, the difference to him, Bob or Bobby. And I think that, uh, you know, what he also said that, you know, on down the road, we may be looking at him to have a couple paid firemen.
Well, they've got the same problem EMS had fifteen, twenty years ago, where we didn't have enough people in town. To answer a call five days a week during the day. You might have one person available, but you didn't have the second one. And, you know, it takes more than two to run a fire, so.
Alright.
So, you know, maybe they've got three or four that are available, but if what you're dealing with takes six. Then you've got a problem. And both the, the fire. Used to be thirty years ago, you could leave your job. And respond to a fire and a lot of the, the companies didn't say, well, you've got to make up the time or if you leave, you're not getting paid. Uh, they would cover the cost because they knew that was, you know, helped their insurance. You know, if their player's on fire. Um, a lot of companies are more. Money's tighter, put it that way. You know. Yeah. And, and you know, if the jobs aren't in Culver and they're working in Clemson, South Bend and wherever. You know, they can't respond to a call for fire.
And, I mean, I guess, you know.
But that's the same thing that EMS ran into and that's when we started having one paid person. We started out one paid person, three days a week, and then it went to, you know, part-time to cover the other two days because there just weren't people in Culver that were free. And, and you know, and I see eventually probably the same thing happening with, uh, you know, with, with fire.
Two things that really resonated yesterday was unsustainable because township wise. And second thing is, we're one of, I'm going to trust Bob and I'm going to call Bob. He says we're, he can maybe think of five in Northern Indiana that still have an independent EMS.
Right. Yeah.
So all I know is what current status quo is unsustainable, unsustainable.
And when you look at it, the, like right now for the volunteers or they're part-time. There's insurance plans, you know, pension plans. They might be independent, but that exists for fire, but it doesn't exist for EMS from what I can find. Like the pension. Yeah, the, yeah.
That was that program.
Yeah.
He mentioned that's instead of bringing EMS and paramedics into, under fire because they can roll into that.
Yeah. And, you know, when it comes to, you know, pensions and other things, there, there are some, there are actually some, uh, like if you get. Like happen in Stark County, killed in the line of duty.
Mm-hmm.
There are a lot of benefits for fire departments that don't exist for standalone EMTs or EMSs. So there's a lot of benefit to combining them one way or another. And the other part is cross-training.
That's the model we talked about yesterday, or one of the models we talked about yesterday is, you know, we're already paid for full-time paramedics here.
Yeah.
Um, but if those were cross-trained, um, and we had two or three. Fire personnel on duty at a time, um, that could also do the EMS or the, the paramedic or, um, response that, I mean, we're already paying that hourly compensation currently.
The only time you run into a problem is if they're on a fire and they get called on an ambulance. You, you've got a conflict there, but, you know.
If your rigs are different.
That's.
There's not a medical emergency at the fire, it's not a problem, but if there is, you're right.
Yeah. And generally speaking now, I mean, EMS goes to all fires. Just in case there's a medical emergency at the fire with one of the firemen or with a bystander. Or someone in the home.
Being a paramedic service, and like Bobby said, you, you get four paramedics at the fire department. I'm assuming that those paramedics all live local, but paramedics that are on the EMS do not live local from what I come to know.
Well.
There are a lot of them that.
I think Bobby's the only one that's actually a paramedic.
Oh, yeah.
The others are EMTs.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. But, but, okay, but back to the paramedic.
Uh, yeah.
Our paramedics are driving the hour to get here. And if the fire alarm goes off.
What's not happening?
An extra room.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
You'd have to get him.
He's not going to get up from his lunch and.
Yeah.
Show up in five minutes.
No, you're right.
With the volunteer system, that's what you ended up with. But, yeah, we definitely need to look into it and, and, but there, there are a lot of advantages. To combining, and I think more advantages for EMS to combine and some advantages for fire to combine.
Well, and you don't have the, uh, animosity per se between the two departments like you did twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a, that's a big factor.
Yeah.
I don't understand ways some employees were able to change the direction that was council wanted.
Well.
They always have a choice on.
I'll tell you one of them one later.
Doctor.
I'm not gonna.
You didn't have on the, you didn't have the votes on the council to do it.
Oh.
Well, you have.
What I know.
Oh.
That wouldn't it.
But that wasn't. But, but that was part of it. I don't think you had a vote that.
Your.
Or did you?
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
I'm not, I'm not going to say anything.
I'm not going to name names. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It was not a tenable situation.
You got it.
Yeah.
And it's history now.
Right. And, I mean, uh, you've got virtually entirely different crews on both departments.
Right.
You know? And, you know, something that stemmed from the sixties and seventies isn't necessarily, you know. You know, something that they're considering in two thousand and twenty-three.
Well.
Where I would hope they weren't.
Well, I know, I agree with you.
Both departments.
No. Let's, let's just say the attitude has changed over.
Mm-hmm.
That period of time.
So that's another one of our high priority reasons.
Oh, it is.
Others. Or that only if you have like. Well, I just wrote down.
I mean, you can't do everything in one.
No, but the one thing that is interesting from that is that what I'm thinking is that there are a number of underlying issues that are creating symptoms. That's creating disease that we've got on our hands when it comes to EMS, the overall problem. I think there are numerous factors that are contributing to that number. In terms of it and trying to sort those out, see which ones are. Some can be cut out, some cannot. And moving forward, I think just researching what's, what's creating those issues. That is, sounds reasonable to you guys.
Yeah.
I think there might be some intermediate fixes that might assist with that.
That's what I'm.
The financial issues.
That's right.
Yeah.
Before we get to a, you know, a fire territory. Right. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not cut off.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Now, back to your question, Bill. Sid. Are we fully EMS? Are we little?
Well.
It's just a fraction. It's like twenty-five percent.
Well, that's right.
And they're doing.
I mean, their utilization rate is about twenty-five percent, but I, I just wonder, I mean, looking at their, looking at their budget. And taking out the pay increases, I mean, going back, say, three years. I mean. Their pay raises have been incremental. They have been gigantic. They've been incremental, but I just can't see the, the total budget. And when looking at the total budget, that those incremental increases have ballooned this budget up to this point. I mean, we're either using a hell of a lot of overtime. We're not using our people efficiently or something.
Capital outlays.
Yeah.
The cost, cost of equipment's a big thing.
Well, that's true, Bill. Yeah, that's true.
Well, and that's, you know, that's true EMS and fire.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah. You can't buy a truck one way or the other for either department for.
Not anymore.
A reasonable amount. You know, the first ambulance we bought was twenty-one, twenty-nine thousand dollars.
The next one's going to be what, five or six hundred?
Yeah, you know, who knows?
Yeah, who knows?
And part of it depends on, you know, which one you.
How you stay, yeah, how you.
How you.
Equip it.
With it and, you know, which style it is.
Right.
Who makes it.
Well, and then, then back when it was twenty-five, how many people could you choose from? And how many come, people can you choose from now?
Yeah, there were a number of, uh, ambulance builders in that. I think the first one was like twenty-nine, the next one was, you know, sixty-something.
Sure.
Next one.
Hmm?
First one was ours.
Well, our backup.
Well, you're right.
The first one for the town.
It was Bo nine tourist. It was Bo nine tourist.
Yeah.
I did not know that.
Oh, yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, you know, back.
Successful, right? Covered one or the other, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, one of, one other thing when we were talking about, I mean, EMS. What about police fire seventy-seven? Karen seems to be the expert.
Well, and she's.
All I've done is, you all know as much as I do based on the email I sent out.
That's basically the tip of the iceberg.
It is, it is. So, I mean, you're not going to have.
The theory.
Our current, so for like Wayne and Chad, it's, it's not available to them. I mean, obviously there's a, there's a age limit, not the ages of it. You know, there's a possibility of getting Nick and, and Alex in there. And it's a lot easier just to, you know, start from, you know, if we hire a new one. Start them there. It'd be kind of like the low sat program for the, for the fire where we'd have to, for Alex and Nick, we'd have to catch them up. So that would be a.
Yeah.
Infested.
There's an initial cost to, to get them up.
Yeah.
And we don't know.
Go ahead, Wayne.
We don't know what that is, do we?
No, because I haven't.
I know you haven't delved into the numbers. I, I don't think Karen's correct when she said about it. There's still a lot of questions. Oh, yeah. They're actually well by. Not just an overnight thing. It needs to be some things that kind of be laid on the table of what's going, what's so you know in advance before. You know, a decision was made or something.
Yes. When you end up. Having to have more committees and. Everything else along with. And, you know, I think we've volunteered and committed some of our departments to the point where. You say committee, they run. Or they crawl under the table.
Freaked out, Carly.
But I would think this would be a goal. I, I mean, it. It's a.
Is it attractive, Wayne, or? Okay.
A bunch of people over the years, you know, a lot of people, unless you have seventy-seven fire, they don't want. It's just. It's an advantage. Because it looked like twenty years, which is what we have right now. There is no. Time frame. It's, it's a better deal, but on the same token, you're not paying them social.
Yeah.
There's lots of minus stuff.
Yeah, opposite.
Yeah.
A lot of it's, you know, they're twenty years, it's been out, they can leave, you know. Get their paycheck. At that.
Well, Karen, you heard a lot of what we've talked about. What's your thoughts?
Which is. I just ran a quick. I've got spreadsheet history from budgets starting in two thousand twelve on this one, just quick from two thousand seventeen, which is about the time we went to paramedic.
About that.
Maybe just before.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I've slept, slept a lot.
I couldn't tell you what year they switch.
Yeah. Um, but the main increases in that budget happened in, um, personnel.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it's a, the rest of them, I mean, if you just kind of. Everything else just kind of evens out. Maybe contractual services have increased and then, um, the radios, just because there was.
Yeah.
An expense this year. So, I mean, to answer the question, somebody was asking about where, what the difference has been. And that's where.
Do you have an idea about how much overtime is, has it increased, remained the same? Has it?
Um. I can run a report and let you know. I, you know, I mean, it's something that I put on when I, when I print out the claims, if you look at the very last page. It shows a summary of, um, you know, what, what each department has spent that in those two weeks. And then also a report on the hours worked in each department and how many overtime hours. And consistently, it's at least double digits. Sometimes it's upwards of, you know, sixty-five, seventy hours of overtime. So, um, if you. In asking, you know, I've talked with him about it, um, and he had, you have some of it, it's, you know, unavoidable. You've got somebody that calls off at the last minute, you know, um. You've got that issue with that workforce, you know, um, because there's not a set.
Right.
So the hands, you know.
And the salaries have, salaries have gone up, most because you changed your level of service.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're paying a volunteer versus paying a paramedic. Yeah, professional versus, you know, somebody off the street.
In the budget, we've got four hundred and sixteen hours of overtime for every one of those paramedics. There were, there were four twelves a week. So they automatically get eight hours of overtime every week, um, times fifty-two weeks is four hundred and sixteen hours. So that's, you know, um, and times five or, yeah.
And the second week, there could be.
Right.
Others that get a lot more than that.
Yes.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
Various factors.
The numbers are.
Some are unavoidable, some are not.
I know.
True.
Yeah.
True.
But it's a huge piece in there, but.
True, but it's a huge piece of there, but.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta figure out a different structure differently. But, and the other thing Bobby was talking about is, um, by state law, um, firemen don't only bother overtime until they're over fifty-six. If I had that number correctly, I think it is.
Yeah.
Like the fire, at least, you don't get overtime until you've had eighty-four hours in two weeks.
Yeah.
Actual time it was.
And fires actually more.
And fires more.
I wanna say it was over a hundred, a hundred and sixteen, am I right?
Well, it was, it's like fifty-six.
Well, maybe that's what it is.
In a one-week period, so.
Yeah, maybe, okay, then that, yeah, that'd be fifty-eight weeks. Right.
Yeah.
Yes, right, it's a, but I can't do that.
Sure.
So, obviously, you know, budgetary EMS, and then you change, I think, the struggle that we have, um, from where I fit is the people that are moving to Culver are expecting that we have the resources, the amenities, and everything that they have where they're coming from, and.
I know, but.
Yeah.
You could be more right.
They think this is Chicago.
They expect their debt.
Uh, yeah, you talk about the south side of Chicago or the north side of Indianapolis, that's what they think this is.
But they want, you know, they, you know, they wanna know that.
Part-time services.
And I.
We got some full-timers too.
And some of the full-time.
You're a full-timer now.
So.
I know.
Yeah, but, but, yeah.
But I don't expect the same services.
I know.
I have St. Charles, Illinois.
And what was your property, what were your property taxes, no, I can tell you what mine were out in suburbs of Chicago, for what they are here.
I was in St. Charles, and it was like twenty thousand.
Yeah.
But with an increasing frequency, the part-timers are staying here to be with their kids over there.
That's right.
Yeah.
The helicopter parents.
I, I mean, we just had a cleaning house in Maple Ridge, or four houses of parents that bought them literally to stay here, so they didn't have to live in Chicago. Four years, they're rotating out, new crops coming in.
Yeah.
When they sold out.
Yeah.
For six hundred thousand dollars. And bought them for about three hundred, raising my tax rate.
No, actually, well. A little bit of a wash, I mean, one of the things is, you know, as these houses are increasing in value, yes, people are paying, you know, maybe paying more, but that tax rate overall is lowering down, decreasing, so our access value is, is often higher. Um, so, you know, some of you with higher houses are paying a lot more, but, you know, some of these, we, we face this.
Right.
Same.
More trees, so then, so when the drone flies overhead and, and reports back to the tax assessor, they don't see what you got, trust me.
But all that to say, I think, you know, there's a lot more demands. Of.
What, plant more trees? How do you think, how do you think they, uh, reassess houses now?
Karen.
Well, you won't be able to see it, because you got a little damn tree.
I didn't realize I was opening such.
No, but. Would, would you say like?
We're just gonna have a webinar with it. You, you guys know me.
Well, I mean, you know, they want more restaurants, they want more.
Right.
They expect more, more businesses, you know, and they're expecting us to support that and, and drive that, but, you know, we don't see people taking the initiative necessarily to improve their business, and, yeah, I mean, they're expecting a lot from, from the town. Um, and I think we're trying to do the best we can with what we have.
That's right.
I mean, we really try not to, you know, spend a whole lot.
Absolutely.
It's, it's not our place to start a new business.
Right.
Courage may be new business.
Waiting for you, right?
Yeah.
Seven years ago, we had this, like that, where people thought suit the tally, they thought we should add more of them. All the showed up, and just.
Yeah, two best dogs, I think, dog generally.
But that's, but that's where I think some of, of the focus of, of this group too, needs to look at, you know, between the budgetary issues and, you know, we've had several different groups come in and request funds, which, ah, you know, that's fine, if we've got the money, let's, you know, go ahead and support them, but, you know, there's gonna have to be some give and take, and they may not be able to support some of these, you know, they're gonna have to find some other sources of income.
That's right.
Be, and I'm not, I'm gonna use this phrase, which I don't think we are, but the cash cow for, you know, so many of this stuff. So I just, I wanna advise you, you know, just, um, I guess, hope that you take that into account.
Yeah.
As we're making these considerations, um, and one other, I guess, um, in suggesting that we have this, this meeting, um, you know, just to basically establish, you know, what you're expecting from Kevin, um, and I said this to a couple of different people, I was very concerned about, every town manager, you know, I just wanna have somebody that I'd like come into that position and that, you know, excludes Kevin, because I because the town, ex-town manager, Rosamann, expects the world. You know, after two years, they get chewed up and spit out, and then we're right back to where we started again, and, you know, all of you on this council have, have been here and seen at least, you know, two town managers.
Mm-hmm.
I've been through three, um, our employees have been through.
No, I've been through three.
A lot of them have been through all, you know, all of them.
Yep.
So I just, I wanna make sure that you all, all of us sitting at this table have some sort of understanding on how we want to operate, how we want to communicate, how we want to work well together, because we haven't been working well the last probably eight to ten months, it's been very contentious, and, um, I wanna see that change, and if I can help make that change, I'm happy to do so, but I just wanna see Evan in this town manager position be successful, and as he is successful, we are gonna be successful.
Yep.
And that's just going to, you know, set that, you know, that ripple effect
Sure.
in motion, I think as we're successful, we're communicating too, it's gonna be helpful to our employees, because I think, you know, the past, you know, ten months or so have been to the contentious, back to unstable, back to just not having a, a stable footing and not knowing what's gonna hit us next, has, had made them very uneasy, and so I'm speaking for the employees as a left official, but someone that sees a number of them on a fairly regular basis, um, I just wanna put that out there to you that I hope that's something that you all will take into consideration as you're making decisions, um, as we're moving forward, as we're working together, um, as we're making decisions. And as we're bringing Kevin on board and, um, working to make, make Culver successful, I think some of it has just been, you know, it's back to where we were before we hit stellar, you know, I think stellar was something that um, much of a headache for some of us at what is was, but I think it, it brought people together behind one common focus. Before that, we had people, you know, we all want what's best for Culver, I mean, there's no question about it, it's just everybody kind of has a different idea of what that best is, and I think Culver kind of brought us together and moved us towards that, that one goal, and what stellar was kind of done, you know, projects fell off, you know, we ran into, people were upset about various things, and we all kind of splintered off, and now I think, you know, we can do the cop plan, getting us back on that same road, getting us all back, moving in the same direction um, for the better vision and some goals that I hope, you know, obviously, the cop plan is a big part of that and following that, and keeping that in the forefront of your mind when you're making decisions. Um, it is gonna help, but I just wanted to express those thoughts to you all, um, number one, number two, you know, if there's some way that we can, you know, just operate better, you know, maybe it's something that you all expect, you know, you want the agenda by Friday afternoon, and if we're gonna have people come in and talk to meetings, we'd like to have them, you know, sign up in advance so that you kind of know what's coming ahead of time. Um, is some of those, you know, this is how we're gonna operate, sort of, but that might be for another, is something that you want.
I think, well, yeah, one of the things we talked about, I don't know if it affected it yet, or did it do it back then, is that each of the council members would be sort of at a tie to one of the departments, um, and, and go perhaps, you know, monthly to a department meeting or, or whatever, you know, um, you and Kevin think are appropriate, but that, so each of us, you know, could, could respond or be, show, have a presence directly face-to-face with those, um, those employees and, and listen firsthand to what they have to say, and, and we come to the, the council here to be somewhat representative of what's, you know, what their thoughts and ideas are. And again, it's like, it's like the pizza thing, it's, it's not, you know, a solution to all these communication problems, but I think it's, it, it shows an interest and, um, interest in listening to pieces. Foster, everything. Maybe a regular lunch or something like that, too.
I would also encourage that you gotta rotate through the department, so that it's not just one person tied to.
Okay.
Because, you know, then, when it comes to this table, it's a, well, that's my favorite, you know, because
Well, thank.
I think you all need to hear.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Yeah, you need to hear what everybody has to say, not just one department.
Yeah, right, and what happens when, you know, there's a tip between whatever council person's assigned to that department, and then, you know, they're on the outs, you just, I just really encourage you, because you all are you all are representing, you know, representing the whole town, just representing the departments, you should
Good.
You should have some contact with them.
Well, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
What, you've sat through what we've done today, and what you expect from us? And, and maybe, I, I don't know, let me throw this out, I mean, wanna meet in two weeks after you've been in the job to see.
I'm gonna pick it up as I go, the one thing that I want from you guys is, first of all, I believe in direct communication, I have a thick skin, I've been a football coach, I've been father in the military, I, I can handle criticism, as long as it's directed and constructive. I absolutely want you to speak directly to me and honestly, if I'm not doing something, if there's a better way, if there's an issue, I wanna know about it. I don't wanna beat around the bush, and I don't wanna tap dance. That's the one thing I have to insist on, I, again, nobody in here is gonna hurt my feelings, I've been married too long to have that happen, okay? That's the one thing I ask for everybody, and I'll try to do the same, respectfully always, but that's the one thing, sitting here today, I've listened and I have a better feel, but I think that's one of those things I'll be comfortable coming to you guys, individuals, all together, and, and, and growing as I, as I learn the job. So having that sit down is not really necessary at the moment, what I heard today, I've heard that we have a two-mile zone around town that's not being utilized in a sense, I've heard that, in essence, if I had to boil it down, one of the jobs looking forward, moving forward in twenty forty and understanding where we're at comprehensively, the trick is stretching the town and not the budget. I think that's, that's the key, developing that economics, seeing the Western Jefferson corridor as, as an opportunity for that, but planning it and getting the ordinances straight before we do it, so we're not investing in infrastructure that's not gonna be used, it's happened. Um, taking care of, you know, moving the solar panels, like, within, within the statues, within the ordinances, clearing that up and getting that on the board, to be fair to the farmers was one thing that I heard, so that clearing those ordinances up is definitely in the planning, um, coordinating that, and taking advantage of the dunes and, and having that opportunity, seeing what we can accomplish on the hinds of that will be interesting. Um, economic and quality of life, where can we, where can we invest and get the greatest return for that investment publicly? Obviously, we can't open a store for somebody, but trying to encourage that growth in town to hopefully develop some new economic opportunities for people is something that's interesting, maybe, something that's always on my mind is that affordable housing, and that's gonna be the, always that golden ring you're chasing after, but it's, it's on my mind, um, other than that, you know, the second issue I think that I need to pour into is understanding EMS, that's a problem, that's a priority. And I wanna be first on that, I wanna be able to understand that problem from a data standpoint, and then looking for recommendations that are out there. Finding, finding case studies that are viable and sustainable for us moving forward. Unless I'm missing something there, that was my understanding.
Your plate's full.
My plate is full, sir.
You were listening well.
Thank you.
We've got forty-five minutes before the meeting, so I don't have anything else, anybody got anything else?
No.
Okay. Back at six thirty. I'm on under tonight.
What's?
After ten.
Oh, the, we, we have. I was gonna say, what's the number? What's under?
It's usually, it's usually an hour.
An hour.
An hour.